Okay, welcome to the July 6, 2015 Town Council meeting. It's starting a little bit late, but we're ready to go. And at this time, if you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Item B, Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any questions on anything in the consent agenda? Do I have a motion? Second. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, next item would be public comments. At this time, anybody in the public would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Please step forward. Jeremy?
Good evening. I'm Jeremy W. Jones Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. You all got, last time, a data sheet on the Saturday bus run. And then after listening to the public hearing, I started going down and checking out some of the stories and reasons different people had as to why they needed the Saturday bus run. I did email Ms. Lynn Scott, the superintendent of buses in Bangor. I have not received an answer as of yet, but I'll put in, this is what I said. Dear Ms. Lynn Scott, one, will you have a Bangor South Run containing the current Hamden bus route, the bulk of which rightly, being rightly funded by the city of Bangor, with Hamden riders contributing only their fares? Two, will you have Hamden subsidize only that portion of the bus run within the town of Hamden? Three, will you have Hamden subsidize only those riders that board in Hamden? And four, will you have only four runs to Hamden on Saturday with conditions as stated in one, two, and three above? Please answer forth with regards, Jeremy W. Jones. So that was my setup to her. I did some of the checks on one of the public hearing. Let's see. Philippa Gilmore stated, she suggested that council consider reducing the number of runs to four on Saturdays to cut the budget in half. Math check. There are 12 runs. Four twelfths is one-third. Hamlin's, yeah, Hank Garfield lives in Bangor. This is Hamden, but he moors his boat at Hamlin's Marine Marina. And I did check with Hamlin's and I don't know what boat he has or if he has a mooring or a slip, but mooring costs 600 bucks for the boating season. A slip is 64 bucks a foot, so if he has a 26-foot boat, that'd be $1,664 for a luxury. And then he states, and this again, remember, this is just, we're talking about Saturday. He says the average cost of a parking place is between 5,000 and 6,000, so the cost of keeping a Saturday bus service would equal four and a half parking spaces. I can tell you that there is no shortage of parking at Hannaford, at Shaw's, and the Bangor parking garage is open and free on Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I didn't get down through everybody, so bear with me. Lori Lanthrop of 128 Mayo Road stated she had to, due to her medical condition, she had to have Saturday bus service in case she ran out of her meds on Saturday. So the first question going through mine is, what does she do on Sunday? If she run out on Sunday? Most of us, me included, know our meds. We have a little reserve. But I went out and I talked to five, five different pharmacists, and they all stated a three to four day prior that any prescription can be filled. Rite Aid actually has an auto-call system, so if you want to set that up with them, they'll call you automatically. You can set a calendar, whatever, I mean, whatever method, it's got nothing to do with the bus. It's personal responsibility. You can have, any family or friend can pick up your prescription with the correct info. Even Rite Aid on meds that need to be refrigerated, they will ship out in an ice pack. And they also stated, if you want more information or need help with any kind of details like that, the Eastern Area on Aging is very helpful with that. And that's about it for now. I'll be working on the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, public comments closed. Moving on to policy agenda. There's no news presentations or awards, no public hearings, nominations, unfinished business. Police Department contract, Finance Committee recommendation, that was discussed tonight earlier in the Finance Committee. It was voted on by the Finance to send to the council for recommendation for the new contract, which represented putting in a detective position, but not to go out and hire, it was going to be from within. There would be some incentive programs for people for a 1% cost of living based on their performance and projects they had to do through the year to earn that 1%. So the vote for Finance was to accept it. Do I have any public comment on the police contract? Discussion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the new Police Department contract as presented to us in the Finance Committee.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Thank you. The next item, 4B, manhole replacements, Old County Road Route 1A Pipe Bursting Project Infrastructure Committee Recommendation. Counselor Marble?
Well, thankfully, we have people like the town manager that take good notes and get them to us by meeting time because some of us might not remember. Basically, I think this is just a version of what happens when you're working in the ground with old stuff, you find problems. In the course of doing the Old County Road Culvert Replacement Project, we got into issues with exfiltration, which, don't ask me to define, please, from old manholes. Basically, it's antiquated brick-based infrastructure that really needs to be replaced. So the new Public Works Director Courier has made a recommendation to address this. The motion was made in committee and seconded with unanimous committee recommendations to add the manhole replacements to the pipe bursting project for an additional cost of $9,700.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we follow the recommendation of the Infrastructure Committee and authorize the Public Works Director to go ahead with the manhole replacement for a cost of $9,700.
We second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, the next item on unfinished business is the ambulance bid results. That was brought to us tonight at the Finance Committee meeting. They put it out to bids. The range was from $180,000 to $230,000 for the bids. It was presented that they would like to purchase the 2015 PL custom demo truck for One of the reasons was the body on the back could be taken off at a later date, moved on to another chassis, which makes it a little less money for us the next time we have to do an ambulance replacement. They also wanted to add two Zoll X-Series monitors, so they'd have them for each ambulance, so both would be the same. Be a lot less confusion for people when they start going out, so they'd have the same monitors. So the total came to $227,159.80. The other thing was with this ambulance, they could have delivery in two to three weeks. The money's in the reserve account, and it would leave a balance of $16,000. It was a recommendation from Finance to accept the bid and to move it forward to the council. Any public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the Fire Department or the Ambulance Department to purchase the ambulance for the $227,000, which includes the two Zoll monitors.
$227,159.80.
$227,159.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Counselor Marble?
The only thing I'd want to note, and it has nothing to do with the quality of this recommendation, which I think we're going to vote for, is it came up in committee discussion that we need to look hard at our reserves going forward in the budget process and not rely on a tight operational budget to necessarily produce savings at the end of each year to which we can build a reserve account. So this is just a note for any public looking in, that this came up again tonight, this year, for next year's budget.
Counselor Wild, just add to that, that that's going to come out of the reserve account?
The motion I just made does come out of the reserve account, which does leave a balance of $16,000, so this is not increasing taxes or anything at this time. We probably do have to look at our budget processes next year, but I don't see any reason why that can't be attainable.
Do we have a second?
I'll second again.
I just have a question. So are we purchasing this from Sugarloaf Rescue Vehicles?
PL Custom Demo. PL Custom Demo.
Okay, thank you. So can we add that to the motion? Okay. PL Custom. Okay, and it's coming from the ambulance reserve account?
Right.
I thought I heard that too, but you know.
Any further discussion, Denise? All in favor?
I want to take a minute to thank the department for all the work they did. They spent five weeks in researching this and looking at all these bids, but they spent a lot of time prior to that developing the bids. As always, they did an excellent job.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Under New Business, Wheeling Heights Block Party Road Closure Permission. That was discussed earlier tonight in the Finance Committee. We had a request to close Wheeling Heights to local traffic only from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. July 19th for a neighborhood block party. Last year, they requested the same thing, and it was okayed by the council. The Chief Rogers said there was no issues, so he does not have a problem with it. So it's on the agenda tonight to see if they can do it again this year. Any public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that, as I did in Finance, that we approve the Wheeling Heights Block, yeah, Block Party Road Closure Permission on July 19th from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Second?
Second, sorry.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next item, 5B, has been put on hold for further dates, so that will not be available to discuss tonight. So the next item is Committee Reports. Counselor McAvoy with Services.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. We haven't had any committee meetings since the last Town Council meeting. Our next one is on the 13th, and I encourage anyone with any interest in it to show up. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marble, Infrastructure?
We had an infrastructure meeting on June 22nd. Minutes were approved under Old Business. We continue to look into the need for parking between the municipal building and the pool. Jim Wilson of Wood and Current explained that we could not add any more non-vegetated area to the town office or pool without triggering the need for a site location of development plan from the DEP. So cutting through some of these notes, we're going to be looking into a permeable solution, which I think is a mixture of gravel and vegetation rather than pavement. Phil Badger was here representing the Kiwanis Club to let us, the council, know that that club is amenable to allowing expansion of the parking area at the Kiwanis Hall should we need it for public parking associated with the change in zoning designation to Village Commercial. The Kiwanis would like the town to plow and maintain that parking lot if it was designated as open for public parking. The Kiwanis Club would like to see a layout of what is proposed, and this item will continue to be discussed at planning and development. Hamden Route 1A Project Info. Town Manager and Public Works Director presented information on the proposal from BACTS, BACS, to treat the final 1.73 miles of 1A rehab as one project instead of several smaller ones. The estimated 10% share of the town would be $465,000, and that would need to be available by the year 2018-19. The manager suggested preparing a referendum question for November of 2016 to gain approval for that project, so the town could do the actual borrowing when the town, when the time came. This project does not include removing the concrete portion of the road base. That change to the project saves approximately $1 million for the overall project and results in $100,000 less needed from the town of Hamden. Debt service on this would replace the gravel roads project debt service that is paid off that year 2016. We mentioned the manholes on the Old County Road Culvert Replacement Project. Under New Business, I think this was DOT if I remember right, Bridge Inspection Reports on Manning Mill Road. The town manager presented information received from the state program about the deteriorated condition of the Manning Mill and Sawyer Road Bridges. Public Works Director Courier will get info on the estimated repair costs and bring them back to the committee. The state of Maine currently has no funding to assist with these projects because of the low priority status of the bridges. The cost of these could be combined with the referendum proposal for the Route 1A project. More to come at the next committee meeting. There were no public comments. There were committee member comments that included Counselor Shakespeare asking the director to look at the transfer station layout and determine if it'd be possible to relocate the swap shop in the interest of public safety. I think specifically Bill had mentioned parking and traffic with people backing out of that area. Counselor Saroyz urged the staff to be proactive in looking at the possibility of acquiring 55 acres for sale in the four-mile square, square area as a possible location for recreational fields. I know that work has been ongoing, and I'll just editorialize that basically every time we think we have a new lead, it turns out to be insufficient and/or wetlands. Public Works Director Courier discussed the MRC project and its possible impact on the town sewer system, in particular, the need to make sure that we remain under the 80% level of allowed use for sewer treatment within the city of Bangor, I think. In order to avoid additional costs, as well as make sure that the impact fees or a host community benefit package addresses the possible need for larger pumps at the Sauerdapskuk and ongoing higher electric costs to run the pumps if the line runs down the Colebrook Road. Lot going on in infrastructure. I'm glad there's a good team on it.
Thank you. Counselor Shakespeare, Planning Development?
We had a Planning Development meeting on July 1st. I am not going to believe where all the subjects we discussed, but just go through them quickly. We discussed the codification portfolio, which is on gone, ongoing by Dean Bennett, still reviewing that. Downtown development plan presentation by Dean was updated. Yeah, municipal Marina sign, the committee discussed that of combining all the businesses there under one town sign. Also, we discussed outreach to RSU 22 for fall building commit, committee meetings as to what's happening there. Under Old Business, we discussed subdivision ordinance reveal. Our CEO, Miles Block, was there also discussing signed standards and revisions in the town of Hamden. And in two weeks, we'll be discussing, according to Dean, draft private way ordinance reveal. That's tentative. Under New Business, Counselor McAvoy wanted to discuss, and we did the TIF policy for the town of Hamden, tax incentive financing. So that was it. And our next meeting is in two weeks from that time.
Thank you. And tonight on Finance, you've heard three of the subjects that were on there. The other thing is we're looking, the town attorney's retiring, so we decided to send out a request for qualifications for a new attorney. We have a list of what Tom Russell had put together of what we need, and it was a very good list, thank you, Tom, for qualifications, so we're going to send that out to look into our next town attorney. The negotiations are still ongoing, I believe, with Time Warner Cable. Within the next week or two, we should be getting the bid results back on the new sound system, video system for this room, which would be a great asset, I believe. And otherwise than that, that was it for Finance Committee. Managers' report?
A reminder to everyone that there are public meetings this week with the two finalists for the town manager position on Tuesday, July 7th, and Wednesday, July 8th, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m., to 6:30 p.m. On July 7th, candidate Angus Jennings and his wife will be here, and that, that public session will be held in the council chambers in this room at, from 5:30 to 6:00. And on July 8th, candidate Ryan Pelletier will be here, and that will be held in the community room out back, because the planning board meeting is scheduled in this. So candidate Pelletier will be on the 8th in the community room. There will be refreshments available, and we'll have name stickers, so people can write their name on when they come in, so the candidates, when you're talking to them, can have some idea of who they're talking to. So it's a great opportunity for the residents to meet the candidates and learn a little bit more about them. A meeting is scheduled for employees with the representatives of Medavision and Maine Municipal to talk about the new health plan and how it would work on Thursday afternoon. My schedule this week was today, as well as tomorrow afternoon, and a few hours each on Wednesday and Thursday for meetings. Unless I clear it with the council, I will keep my hours to 20 hours most weeks and not exceed 25 without council permission, but I'll do my best to not exceed 20. 30-day notices for unpaid 2014-15 property taxes will be mailed out on July 20th. Tax liens will be placed on properties whose 2014-15 taxes remain unpaid by August 19th. New tax bills should go out the last week in August, and you will be presented with a commitment for those taxes at your second meeting in August, which is when you set the mill rate, which I anticipate will be the same as this year. And finally, nomination papers will be available for three at-large council seats, several school board openings, and for a trustee for the water district as of Wednesday, August 5th, which is just a little less than a month away. All those interested in helping the community through service on one of these boards should see Denise Hodston, the town clerk, to take out nomination papers starting August 5th. Thank you.
And when was the deadline on that?
They'll need to be returned by Thursday, September 3rd.
Thank you.
Is that the deadline to? Is that the deadline to pick them up also? I know we can pick them up on August the 5th until?
Yes, the town charter says that nomination papers can't be taken out sooner than 90 days before the election, and they have to be returned no later than 60 days before the election. So the dates are August 5th is when they're available, and September 3rd when they're due back.
But you could take them out on the 3rd and return them the 3rd if that was your, I mean, they, they can be taken out right up until?
Until the last day.
As long as they're on my desk by 6:00 p.m. on September 3rd.
With sufficient signatures.
Yes, yes. I would urge anyone to get them in before 6 o'clock, because if you don't have enough signatures, I do need time to verify them.
There's only 25 people you have to verify.
This is at-large this year, so yes, you have to have at least 25. I think it's between 25 and 35 signatures.
No more than 35. You have to have at least 25, yeah. I don't know if I have that many people that like me in the town anymore.
Thank you, Denise. Next item is Counselor Comments. Counselor Shakespeare? Can I let you since everything's fresh?
Everything's fresh, huh?
On our minds.
On our minds. Okay, yeah, the, Jeremy Jones was up here during public comment, and I'd like to talk to you, Jeremy, afterwards, please. There's a, the public meeting is next, not this Wednesday, but on the 15th at the city of Bangor, right? About the bus, Saturday bus. And at what time is this due, 11:00 or 4:00?
4:00.
4:00 p.m. Okay. That's the same evening I have Planning and Development, so, thank you.
Counselor Wild?
No comments this week.
Counselor Dupree?
No comment.
Counselor Marble?
Well, in case he said anything to make it happen, I want to thank Counselor McAvoy for this stretch of weather.
Counselor McAvoy?
You're welcome. Summer is here, and I just, you know, please be careful out there. I mean, you know, even though we have the fire, you know, works ordinance, if anybody's been paying any attention, it does require some intelligence on the user's part, and even though we have an excellent, you know, emergency staff, you know, here in town, we'd rather not utilize them for those type of things, so just have fun, be careful, and shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
I guess I would like to ask the public, we're going to be interviewing for the next two days for the two candidates for Town Manager. We've got some important business going on in town, and I'm going to speak for myself and probably for most of the council. It would be nice if we could get some feedback from the public. We sit here, you know, week after week and make decisions that we think is best for the town, and I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that have a viewpoint. They could just email us, they can get on the town website and get our email address and send us an email and give us your views. We'll take those into consideration. We were voted in by the public, and we really do want to represent the people of this town, so I just encourage you to voice your opinions to us, so we have an accurate idea of what the people in this town would really like, and thank you. A motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, and good night.